Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 17, 2016. We are meeting at one government center in the Committee Hearing Room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Tracy Wright, the lady to my left, is recording an audio version and Fall River Government TV, Phil Sabatino, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement. Present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, John Frank III, Vice Chairman, James Corkin, Carolyn Marasette, and alternate, she's the quirk of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and alternate member Ed Avila. Also present is the Director of Planning for the City of Fall River, Attorney William Kenny, the gentleman to my immediate wife. Tracy, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeal and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes, they have.
I declare the March 17, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abuddies, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the Building Department, Planning, Engineering, and Licensing Departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are however not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a new city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1 requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I recommend that anyone asking to develop, improve, or use real estate should first ask a building inspector from our Building Department since they are the zoning enforcement authority. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. So, with my opening remarks, now we'll start with Agenda Item Number 1, Nancy Fertato, 101 Hill Street, Lot L17103. This is a variance request to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district S, lot size 7,397 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, Bob Vererby, ProLite Engineering, and Nancy Fertato, the owner of the property. What we're requesting a variance for, they have an existing single-family house at 101 Hill Street, they would like to propose an addition to the back of their property. The existing house is situated on the property is very thin, the front corner of the house they show is 4.2 feet from the property line, the back corner 5.1 feet from the property line. What they want to do, it skews away from the property line, they want to connect the house at that corner at the 5.1 which will be the closest distance to the property line, bring that back, straight back from the house where it'll end up being 5.1 feet from the property line. The rear setback, we would meet, the other setback, we would meet, and right now the other setback is of the existing dwelling is basically on the property line. It's a single-family house now, it will remain a single-family dwelling. What she's proposing to do is to extend, I submitted a footprint of the proposed house with the zoning application. She's proposing to extend her existing kitchen towards the back of the property and then put in a living room in the middle of it and then an additional bedroom against the side where the property line is. Very tight lot, tough to construct this piece of property. I believe that she has a document here which I can submit to the Board where the owner, Jeffrey Hopkins, the property to the north is going to allow her, if this is granted, permission to use his property to construct the addition to her property.
Say that again. The, uh... The abuddah? The plan that I'm looking at, I see Jeffrey Hopkins, but...
Yeah, to the north.
Yeah, to the north. The addition seems to be within the boundary lines of her lot.
It is within the boundary, but to get to it, to build it, to get to...
Oh, just for access?
Yeah, for access, yeah.
So, the building isn't going to extend onto his property?
No.
So, just access during the construction?
Correct, yeah. So, it's going to match that corner at 5.1 which will still be the closest corner?
It'll stay in line, it'll stay in line with that one.
Yeah, and then skew away.
So, we're not encroaching any further into that sideline than what already exists.
Correct. It's just for access, to construct it if it's granted.
So, we're extending the dining room, we're increasing the living room, and there's another bedroom that's going to be added to it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have the letter here which I can submit to the Board.
Thank you. Is the Board any questions?
Single story.
It's single story, and it will remain.
No? Nothing for that? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay.
Your face is very familiar. I was there when you came to the office to ask about the procedure, I think, to do this.
Yes.
Was this a situation where...
Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, this is a question, yeah. Are you the person that I saw?
Yes.
Is that the answer?
I am.
Yes, it is. Yeah, when we were running back and forth between the offices.
Yeah. To be like in court, I gotta ask you a question.
Oh, okay.
No, I just didn't know who you were going with, okay.
And, uh, am I correct in recalling that this involved an in-law situation or a situation where this would be, you know, accommodate a family member, question mark?
Well, it's because I am 76 and a widow and my son and his wife will be moving in and it's a very small house, so we need to add on a little bit to accommodate us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right. Right there. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. That petition is granted. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 2, Stanley Webb, 150 Baker Street, Lot F103, variance request to construct a four-family dwelling waiving dimensional requirements in a two-family residence district, R4, lot size 6,120 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre, I'm Senior Project Manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth, Massachusetts. The parcel before you with an address of 150 Baker Street. A year and a half ago, I was before the Board seeking relief to allow the construction of a four-family dwelling, replacing a five-family structure that had been ruined by fire and subsequently demolished. That variance was granted. At that time, I was working for someone who was in the process of purchasing the property. That sale never went through. On top of that sale not going through, the variance was never recorded. The person who was going to be financing the project, who was Mr. Webb, came back to me after he has now had to take the property back in some form because of the financing and wanted to go and construct the dwelling. I had to tell him that the variance had in fact expired and that he would need to come back before the Board and seek the same relief over again. So, that's what we're here for this evening. Again, this was a variance that was granted and I do believe you have a copy of the previous application and approval from 2014 which expired in 2015 for this exact same application. All I've done is changed the name of the applicant on the plan as well as the application. So, we have a lot that falls in in our Ford district that housed a five-family structure. You see some photos of the structure as it was caught on fire and the proposal is to replace that with a four-unit dwelling with the appropriate parking of one, two, three, four, five off-street parking spaces, location for trash that you see shown on the plan, and it actually get in some better setbacks than what was previously for the subject. We would have 10-foot side yards and a 5-foot front yard setback to the front step and 10 feet to the structure. The rear portion of the property, we would be 40 feet from the rear of the building to the property line and 37 feet from the rear steps to the rear property line. So, again, this is just a reiteration and requesting that the Board reapprove or reaffirm the variance that was granted back in 2014. If you have any questions specifically to the application, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Yes, sir?
This, John Silver, 51th Street. This property, it may have held a five-family before, but we want to try to, I think we want to try to move to lower density. If you take the five parking spots, each family is going to have at least two cars. So, you're going to put three cars on the street there. It's very, very tight when you come around there. So, I think, we know what the winter we had last when you put all these cars on the street, where are they parking? Some folks might have three cars. So, you're adding cars on to an already congested area. If it's a two-family residence, they had it as a five before because that was probably done in 1900, but if it's a two-family, I think the neighbors would appreciate that as opposed to having four families and eight, three or four extra cars on the street.
Thank you. Okay. If you look at the plan, the property to the south is a two-family, the property to the north has a six-family, across the street's a three-family, there's a single-family. It is dense, but lot sizes aren't consistent with the neighborhood. My curiosity, because I signed off on the March 20 of 2014 decision, it was unanimous vote of 5 to 0, but I couldn't really remember or find my notes concerning that and I verified that it was in fact a five-family dwelling that was there prior to, prior to the fire and it did take up pretty much the whole width of the lot. So, this proposed building envelope gets us some more of a front yard, larger rear yard, some side yard offsets, and we do in fact provide, the proposal provides for some off-street parking that I think prior to that there may not have been, at least I didn't see any in my investigation. I understand your concern that less density is better for the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, by right, we have a two-family district and if they were to build a two-family structure, there is no requirement that they have to provide any off-street parking for that. So, you could potentially have two families worth parking entirely on the street. Back in 2014, it was our argument and it was agreed upon by the Board that the proposed condition of the four with the off-street parking was a vast improvement of what was there previously with the five. And at the time, that was the concession or the way that we came in with it was that we didn't want to push the limits and push to replacing it with the five the same way that the five came down or even in the same footprint. It just didn't make sense, it wasn't good development, and the owner didn't want to create a structure that had no parking. There's no sense in replacing exactly what was there for the five-family structure that had no parking. So, we came up with this design of the four-unit building and five off-street parking spaces.
No, I'm looking at the dates of the one prior to that, January 17, 2013. I remember the former Vice Chairman Gene Howson, I driving by and looking at it, but we still, in January, we were using the old ordinance, the one that we did in March 20 of 2014. We had this current ordinance that we were looking at. And, not that it's any precedent or binding on the Board what we did before, but the deliberation then was that the four families seem to work. But we have a new Board and we have new ideas, so...
That's correct.
Is it a two-story floor?
Um, it's probably going to be two stories like a townhouse style. That's why we have, you'll see there's actually four doorway locations with four sets of steps.
Two firsts, two second, that kind of situation?
It might be...
Up and down?
Up and down, up and down, I'm not sure of that. At the time, it was just, this was about, this is the footprint that could work on the site in order to provide the right parking, lane width, trash removal, and side yard setbacks of which we didn't meet any of them before. And then the developer was going to have to fit within that footprint. So, I couldn't tell you architecturally exactly what the building was going to be, but he does have the flexibility to do, you know, one over the other.
The building envelope 40 by 50 is what's being proposed?
That's correct, that hasn't changed.
What we ended up with is one of those blocks, two entrances, it's probably going to, I don't know, I don't know the construction, I don't know how it's going to be.
Just questioning whether it was going to be four stories tall and you needed to fit inside the requirements of...
No, it would not be a four-story building. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Goebbard?
I agree with the gentleman as far as the parking, I know the area well, it's congested, but I also think a four-family in there would make that, all the houses look a lot better in there more, would improve the looks of that neighborhood.
Well, the lot is just sitting vacant now, there's nothing on the lot now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Avila. Well, can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
I have a motion to grant.
One second.
I have a second to Mr. Avila. Any discussion on the motion? I'll remind the Board that when we granted it in 2014, that there was same thing. Conditions were that there should be at least five off-street parking spaces, the trash area shown on the plan shall remain in place, and those were the only two conditions that we had.
Same conditions.
Same conditions. So, you amend your motion to include those conditions as part of the variance. Okay? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? So, that petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you. Agenda Item Number, Dan, I'm going to make this part of the record.
Sure, thank you.
Agenda Item Number 3, Lillian Cowell, care of Leona Rice and Carl Rice vacant lot on the south side of Kennedy Street between 439 and 483 Kennedy Street, Lot U1119. Variance request to construct a single-family dwelling waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district S, lot size 11,750 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of the property owners of map U1119. As the Chairman stated, the city still has it listed as Lillian L. Cowell care of Leona Rice, care of Carl Rice, as you'll see, signed on the application as Carl Rice. Lillian and Leona are deceased. And what I was able to finally ascertain was a copy of approbate document from Connecticut that lists Mr. Rice. This, the city's records just hadn't caught up to that yet and even the Registry of Deeds in Massachusetts has not as well. But just so that you can see that Carl Rice is who signed the application and that document states that he has the ability to do so. So, we have this parcel of land on Kennedy Street. It falls within a S single-family district which requires 100 feet of frontage and 12,000 square feet. As you can see, the lot presented to you has 125 feet of frontage, so we are in excess of the frontage requirement by 25 feet, but you will also see that we are shy 250 square feet for the area not to meet the 12,000 square feet. It is my opinion that this parcel does not need to come before the Board, however, the Building Department, the Building Department explained to the owner that he felt that it was in her best interest to come to the Zoning Board of Appeals just to ensure that the lot would be considered buildable. Again, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, which again, I don't think is required to have relief sought, however, that was not the building inspector's interpretation and as you know, we just, it's easier for us to come down and get the clarification here and seek the relief to be granted. So, again...
Mr. Aguirre, it was a single lot?
It was...
With no other common ownership around it?
That is, well, ultimately, the lot on Corbett Street now behind us...
Yes.
Is owned by Mr. Rice, however...
But it didn't have contiguous frontage?
No, and as 86423 clearly states that you do not combine lots that are only solely connected or solely common by their real lines as long as each lot has frontage. So, at no point did these lots merge. This lot is made up of a number of smaller lots from a subdivision plan in 1906 and it has been held in this ownership through Lillian dating back to 1980 and in her family since then, but at no time did any of U1126 be in common ownership or U1117. So, we have this series of five 25-foot strips that were purchased, actually described as three separate parcels in the deed and actually two separate deeds that make this one parcel.
But they all merged together to make U1117?
They've all merged, correct. And just to make sure that everything's clear and where there was probate issues, the seller wanted to make sure that they had a buildable lot and just not rely on the interpretation of either myself and attorney or the building inspector. So, we are here.
Okay, thank you.
Any construction on the lot will meet the requirements, every setback in the district.
No, it meets all the, it meets all the demand, but for...
We're shy 250 square feet.
That's it. In all other respects, the building envelope meets side yard, front yard, rear yard requirements, has proper frontage, it's the dimensional square footage requirement that's 250...
That's correct.
...square feet less. And that's the only relief you're looking for.
That's correct.
Okay. Members of the Board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor? You're in favor of the petition?
No, I'm just the opposite.
Okay. So, first we'll find who's in favor. So, there's nobody in favor, you're opposed to it. You identify yourself, please.
Just give me a few minutes to speak and I'm not here to try and stop anybody from developing their land. A single-family home behind me is not, not really a concern to me.
Can you identify yourself, please, sir?
I'm sorry? Oh, yes.
Okay, know who you are?
Orlando Conforty 483 Kennedy Street. I'm Daniel O'Butter. And I'm here because if certain conditions aren't met, property harm is going to come to my property and I'm here for the protection of the welfare and health of my family and the value of my property. So, why am I saying that? My wellhead is three and a half feet from the property line. Okay? And so, here are my concerns, okay? I assume they're going to hook up to the sewer on Kennedy Street and pump up, which means there's always a potential that that pump failing, sewage flooding, flooding their yard, possibly flooding my yard. There's ledge, that area is loaded with ledge. If you can't dig a foundation, in some instances, you may have to, Lillian's house at 194 Corbett, they couldn't make a foundation because of ledge, so she has no seller. Can't use dynamite. You use dynamite, I had a neighbor who wanted to use dynamite one time, got to crack your wellhead and we all have wells in that area. I've got two things here, one from the EPA and one from the Department of Environmental Protection on guidelines for private well, talking about, you know, avoiding pesticides, fertilizers, herbicides, degreases, fuels, or other pollutants near the well. I'm concerned about that. I don't use any chemical fertilizers, I use no herbicides on my lawn just to protect my well water. I've been at there 26 years and I'm not, well, let me do one other thing here from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Just give me a second to read this, won't take long. Any person intending to have a private well constructed should identify all potential sources of contamination which exist within 200 feet of the site. Where possible, a well should be located, upgrading it of all potential sources of contamination and should be as far away removed from potential sources of contamination as the general layout of the premises and surroundings permit. They also go on to say, storage, use, and disposal of herbicides, pesticides, fertilizers, hazardous materials, and sub-waste disposal, subsurface waste disposal can adversely affect the water quality of a private well. In my 26 years, I'll be 26 years there in August, Royal Crest Estates, which that was all private up till about eight years ago, that part of Kennedy Street got opened once Thomas Flatt Corporation sold it, Aimco bought it, I won't give you all the details, they opened up the woods and it went from being private, I couldn't even park my car in front of my house for the first 20 years that I was there, yeah, and first 18 years that I was there because Royal Crest considered that part of Kennedy Street their property. They're on your third owner now and just to tell you that, you know, it's not a figment of my imagination or a fantasy that there's potential problems to your well water, they put up a sign for me, so they now allow dogs. At one time, Royal Crest never allowed dogs. They put up a sign for me to stop dogs from defecating on my embankment, which is now my embankment, used to be theirs next to my wellhead. I've stopped their landscaping people from putting fertilizer and herbicides on that embankment. And I have pictures here if you'd like to look at them.
You want to present them to the Board, please.
They change landscaping companies every two or three years and you can see that's my wellhead. You can see that they got their trucks parked there, they're refueling their lawnmowers, those circles on the ground are gasoline, they're dropped.
But this is not your property.
This is my, this is parking, this embankment, my well is right at the top of the embankment. So, you see, here's the well, right there, here's the embankment.
But this is their land.
This is Kennedy Street, it's my land now. It's the well, let's put it like this.
When these photographs were taken?
When these photographs were taken, it was, it might still have been theirs, yes. But I asked them to stop and they did. They've been a very good neighbor. Whenever I've had a concern, they address it. So, why am I here? If I'm not opposed to the house being built, why am I here? You got 11,750 square feet. I won't, I'm not even going to go into that other part. I'd like a buffer zone to protect my wellhead. I'd like 875 square feet in the northeast corner of that lot, which is a small percentage, still leaves plenty of room to build. I'd like that little section left undeveloped so that if there is runoff or, you know, look, let me tell you, in my deed, I have deed restrictions. Royal Crest had a preservation easement, we had right of ways. I've seen those in 26 years, people totally ignore them. You get homeowner who doesn't even have the ability to read his deed, never mind enforce the deed restrictions that are on there. So, that's what I'm concerned about. My well gets polluted, maybe I find out when I'm sick or when my wife's sick, or maybe my wife, my house is worth nothing if your well's polluted. There's no, there is water right there on Kennedy Street, but it belongs to Royal Crest. It's meted up at Highland Avenue and Courtney Street, so you can't tap into it. If I could tap into it, I would have tapped into it years ago. And one other, if we are granted a buffer zone, how do I get, who do I turn to if homeowner goes in there and totally ignores the deed restriction? Who do I turn to for help?
You will probably hire a competent attorney.
No, maybe I can get something in writing, that might help, you know, that might help, you know.
Let's see if the engineer can answer any of your questions.
I can respond. Mr. Chairman, as you had stated prior to this evening's meeting, there are a number of other Boards that this applicant needs to go to in order to get the proper permits and meet certain regulations to allow the construction of a single-family home. This is strictly a zoning issue before this Board of 250 square feet. Items such as ledge removal, portable water, whether it be a... Items such as ledge removal, potable water, whether it be a well, public water supply, whether it be tying into sewer, drainage, all those number of things. The new site plan review requirements of the city will cover most of that information. Your normal building permit will cover others, and there's basically the Massachusetts Building Code that requires us to meet certain standards. DEP is well regarding wells. None of those regulations that the gentleman stated says shall. It's a number of recommendations, but they are not requirements by any means. Steadfast rules and regulations, that is not. I deal with drinking water wells all the time. I think it's important to note that Mr. Orlando only constructed his house in 1990, so this isn't like it was, he built out there by himself 100 years ago, and all this development has come up around him. Directly to our west at 439, there's a new dwelling built in 2005 on 4,648 square feet. Directly across the street, number 430, that home was built in 2005. Heading west further yet, U1111 was built in 2005. Directly behind us, number 174 Corbett was built in 1996. So the hills or mountains that we must climb in order to build a home on this lot are no different than anyone else on the surrounding lots had to face when their time came to build. This just happens to be the last vacant piece of land, larger than most in the area, I must say, so we should be able to actually accommodate those requirements and rules and regulations easier than anyone else could on the street. So I can understand the gentleman's concerns regarding his well. I have a private well as well at my house, and I do make sure that certain types of fertilizers and things like that aren't used on my lawn. And if we end up using a well for U1119, it will be in that landowner's best interest not to do it either, because he could potentially contaminate his own well. However, those types of rules and regulations and concerns, I think, are beyond the scope of this board. It is something that will need to be addressed through the building department and through site plan review, but there is no permitting for this well other than through the Board of Health, and they can make recommendations, but there are no steadfast requirements prohibiting the use of fertilizers. Should you? No, as a factor of safety, but there is no requirement saying that you can't. So I don't think this is the forum to put those types of regulations and stipulations. Not that it would really matter, I just think it's bad precedent to set, agreeing to certain types of restrictions on a lot where we're talking about 250 square feet. Our lot is approximately 3,000 feet larger than Mr. Orlando's. So he was allowed to build on that lot of 9,500 square feet, not meeting the area requirements as well. Was there any concern given to the Obata's wells or the Obata's water when Mr. Orlando built? No, but he's been a good neighbor, and he has steadfastly not used fertilizer, as he has stated. So you can only assume that the person coming in to build on this new dwelling would do the same.
Can I add a question? Hold on, you ready?
Go ahead, Mr. Orlando.
It's Mr. Conforty.
Orlando Conforty.
First off, there were no wells there when I came. Everything that the attorney's saying there behind me, that was all woods.
I'm not an attorney.
Engineer, okay, was all woods. And Lillian, Lillian Cowell, great neighbor, 20 years I had her, she was still here, she would tend in her grave, because I know just what she wanted done with that land, but that's another story. I won't bore you with that. There were no wells. When Kenstein developed that area, I think that's Mark 11 right there, if I'm not mistaken, it's been a long time since I've seen your mark.
Isn't that Attorney Mark's?
You know all about my deed mark. I don't want to hold you up.
There you go.
There was no well. And if my well was 50 feet from the property line, I wouldn't be here. You know why my well is three and a half feet from that piece of property? Because back in 1990, Mrs. Lillian Cowell had an old septic system in her backyard. It's a unique area. Some people have wells, some people have water, some people have sewer, some people have septic. Lillian had a septic system in the backyard, so Kenstein, doing the right thing, moved my well as far away from that septic system as he could, which was 100, approximately 100 feet in a lot. Lillian, nobody knew when Lillian was going to pass away, unfortunately, and subsequently that septic system failed, flooded her whole backyard, didn't bother my well, because I was farther enough away, and she had to put a new septic system in her front yard, three times the size required, because the land there doesn't perk, it's all clay.
Those are conditions that whoever buys this or whoever's building on it will have to confront. I appreciate those concerns that you're raising. The Director of Planning has a question.
No, he answered the question.
He answered it.
I was going to ask how it came to be that your well was so close to the lot.
And what happens, I mean, DEP's requirements now, and even back in 1990, the minimum offset for a well to a property line is 10 feet. So the well was probably installed illegally if it's three feet, because it should have had to have been 10 feet off the street line and 10 feet from the property line.
The situation of his, I don't know whether you're going to connect or not, that's beyond the scope of this board to talk about whether you're going to connect to the sewer system or not.
Correct. We're hoping to.
No, no, I got it, because I'm just saying, if you have, if his well is there, then you're going to be limited to where your.
Of course.
On-site sewage, septic system's going to be located, so.
Can't put a septic.
No, no, what I'm saying is, in the event that, we were talking about on-site sewage disposal, your well is going to govern where the situation of that on-site disposal.
Now, that's a regulation. You cannot be within 100 feet of a drinking water well with a septic system.
I just wanted to make sure that he understood that, that in the event we did, that there was, there was going to be away from his well.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr., I appreciate you coming this evening, and I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
We're not done yet, you've got to wait for us to make a vote, see what else we want to do, I don't. So you took the time to come here, and I'll listen and see what we're going to do. Is there anyone else opposed or any other input on this particular petition? Okay. So, members of the board, can I get a motion to grant? Can I get a motion to deny? Are there any conditions you want to put in? I will say, looking at it, I'm kind of surprised that it's before the board, because I think it was a grand father lot anyway, but in that, the petitioner has requested that the board take action because of the 250 square feet that it's missing from being a perfectly conforming lot. The board can't in fact act, because we have the petition before us. So the only waiver, the only dimensional requirement that's before the board is 250 feet, so if it had, it would be 12,000 square feet, it's 11,750.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant with the condition of two off-street parking as a minimum.
Okay.
And the building envelope to fall within that stated.
As shown on the plan, meeting all dimensional requirements, so the only waiver that you're agreeing to is the 250-foot square feet on the total lot area. Okay. I have a motion, Mr. Villa had the second. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five. The petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
I just get my pictures back.
No, I don't know. Well, you made them part, listen to me, you made them part of your presentation, they were brought to the board. I don't know where the trace is going. Do we do something? Do you make photographs? Do you give them back?
No, we usually keep them, but if somebody submits them, they keep them in file.
Do you want these? Do you need these ones?
Well, if you did, submit those to the court, so that you read them, so that's fine. That's what we have.
Okay. Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Petition number four. Does anyone need a break? Keep going. Petition number four, item number four, 130142 Underwood Street LLC, 130142 Underwood Street, Lot M3116. A variance request to construct a stairway for use as a fire escape and deck to the existing multifamily dwelling, waiving dimensional requirements in a single-family residence district S. Lot size 21,500 and.
Thirty.
No, no, yeah, 530.
I refixed it, but I guess.
Oh, I guess I, I'm reading, yeah, 21,500.
Thirty.
You identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Attorney Mark L. Levin. The law office is at 138 Rock Street, Flor River, Massachusetts. I'm here representing the applicant this evening, the 130142 Underwood Street LLC. My clients purchased the property at 130142 Underwood Street in Flor River a couple of years ago, and without their knowledge at that point, they did not realize that there weren't, for each level of that property, a second means of egress. As the board knows, the building inspector has been doing many inspections throughout the city of multifamily buildings, and after my clients acquired this, they asked that they could inspect this property to see about any different compliances for it. When they went through the property, they realized that the apartment that is more or less facing the south part of the building on Leiken Avenue did not in fact have a second means of egress out of the property. So with that, they required that a fire escape be installed, because we know that fire escapes can no longer be the window with a ladder coming down like on my building, but I'm not taking them off, so. But in this case, they have no ability to, they have to do something to put that for use of the property. The proposal for this is to place the deck, is required to have a deck that comes out of a door now, and then goes down a stairway, that's just the requirements of the building inspector's office and the state building code.
The deck, the deck is a landing, it's not a pleasure.
It's a landing.
It's not going to be, it's not going to have.
No, no, just so they can get out. Yeah, they require.
The construction of the stairs coming down, it's the landing to go down.
Yeah, it's a fire escape, landing deck, whatever you want to call it. It just really, because it's a means of egress out of the building, and it required the minimum size requirements. This happened to be because it's a odd location, they actually have to anchor it on the corner to bring it out. There were only three places that this could be put on. One was the west side where you see, because it allows the door to be installed, the deck come out, the people come out of that side and go down the stairways onto their own property and to be less intrusive to the neighborhood. The other way would have been on the south side of the building, there is approximately eight feet there, but the deck and the stairwell would encroach and would be over the sidewalk, so we can't do that. And on the south, east side of the property, the stairways, again, if you, no matter how you coordinate that, since you'd have to be close to the backside, the stairway would have to hit the building and have to take a turn onto the sidewalk. So the only location that the building inspector would approve was this location. And again, it's required by the state building code that there be second means of egress. Unfortunately, my clients purchased it without that knowledge that there wasn't a second means.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just to bring up there, this is truly a topographical hodgepaw, because the location of the building on this lot makes it such that you can't accomplish what you would do to build this stairway anywhere else, because it's, again, you only have the west, south, and east side of that property in order to put that stairwell for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Can I get a motion to grant, a motion to deny? Is there any discussion on the means of ingress and egress for this fire escape? I have a motion to approve by Mr. Coffin, so I have a second. Mr. Villa, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, petition's granted. Thank you, Mr. Levin.
Thank you for your time. Irwin Gobrah.
Okay. Do we have minutes from the February meeting? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the February 2015 Zoning Board of Appeal meeting? All those in favor? Any other business?
No.
Can I motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
The zoning board of appeal for the city of Flor River, March 17, 2015, 16, is now closed. Thank you.